Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. But, uh, we'll get to that in a little bit. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Okay.[288.00]
Jay.
Call the robe.
Waters?
Here.
Capron?
Rhonda?
Capron? I'm here. Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Go ahead, are you leading up then?
Okay, this morning we're here with the wrap-up discussion for CIP. And we do have an agenda which just brings, has the projects that we were bringing back or had questions on. We will go through the ones that are for discussion, then we'll go to the reports. So if you have any question on that, and last we will go over the technical changes that have happened from that last meeting. And the first up is the annual emergency storm sewer. That is on page 194, there's a report on page three. And we have the Parks and Rec Department and the Utilities Department is here. And the discussion is regarding the cost option of relocating Pulaski Park to resolve storm water issues.
Who's doing it?
Just waiting to see if you had questions. Mark Simms, Utilities Director.
Good morning.
We had been asked during initial CIP hearing to bring back a report on what we were doing, what we would want to recommend as far as doing with Pulaski Park and the storm water issues there. And so you do have a memo in your packet.
The problem happens when you have a rainstorm.
I'm sorry?
The problem happens when you have a rainstorm.
Right. Have a larger pipe feeding a smaller pipe and we have surcharging.
I caught bullheads there when I was a kid. It was a lake. And we, in our intimate wisdom, filled it in, which was pretty stupid. You weren't here, so we can't blame anybody here presently.
Fish either.
But why can't you open cut?
That's the, that's the recommendation that we're having.
Okay, well, so why, why would you move fields? Because when you have a rainstorm, you don't play baseball. So I understand the problem, kids, but the, kids aren't there when it rains.
Right. There's a couple of things going on, Mayor. One is we have an opportunity, if we can slow the water down, we can improve water quality, which may allow us to qualify for sponsored project money. And if we can accomplish that, then we can do several water quality improvements in the area and also potentially move the ball fields, which is apparently a desire of the Little League.
I probably, Mayor, I probably get this going because when the issue came up, I knew that, about the ball fields. I knew about this issue through the public works meetings at Pulaski Park. But there was some discussion about moving the fields to Strikers. And, and at the time, I think I was, it was my belief that if the, if the fields weren't there, that it would be more economical to fix the problem and not have to worry. You were worried about fixing it and having kids.
Yeah, Pete, and I think the concern more is if we open cut it, the width of the open cut required is going to probably encroach on at least one ball field and, and some of that complex there. That wasn't something, and the open cut wasn't something that was of interest, I guess I would say. For the Little League, they were concerned about liability issues. I happen to disagree with that. I think that, you know, there's already a, a open ditch there and kids can go and mess around if they want to in that ditch without supervision and, and potential, you know, injuries or whatever. So we wouldn't, I don't think, be increasing our liability there.
Yeah, and again, I thought Little League was looking to move everything to the south. And if they were, maybe they're not fair.
And potentially capture the sponsored project money. There's no guarantee that we would be able to receive that. I think we need to do a good job of performing on the existing sponsored projects that we have.
Sure.
Before DNR would talk to us seriously about that. But we want to open discussions with them and see what it would take from their perspective. We've certainly increased the, the SRF loans that we're looking for with wastewater projects. So there's opportunity there.
Except for, I will correct that, the current ones, we are not eligible.
Okay.
It would be future ones.
The potential new one.
It would be future ones.
Mark, would we still need to do the $30,000 drainage study?
Well, I, I think that there's, there's multiple reasons to do that. That'd be our recommendation, you know, we, we want to make sure that we understand what is happening with drainage in that area so that we do it right the first time. We also know that it's going to require relocation of at least some of the ball fields, if not all of them. And there's an interest in doing that. As you may have seen in your packet, there was a previous study done in 2004 with some cost estimates in there. And we would hope that would be updated so we would know what the cost would be if you chose to do that relocation.
Is this the project where several trees would be removed?
We'd have to remove several trees. We would, we would probably wipe out the bleacher section.
On the west?
Right, kind of the west side there. And potentially encroach on, on at least the one field there.
Well, we should have never built ball fields there, that's the problem. But, yeah, 40 years later, we're not going to solve that problem.
How long have they been there?
Oh, gosh, I bet 40 years. They filled in the old Half Moon Lake. Let's see, I can tell you about when. Probably about 76, 77, they filled it in, right? It's probably been 40 years.
I'll bet it is.
You think the timing of this study is needed now, the 30,000?
Well, I'd, I'd like to, you know, continue to bring it forward and, and recommend a solution so that we don't continue to have problems with, you know, the, the 72-inch storm pipe that we have underground now, the bottom of it is pretty much gone. And when we get rain, enough rain from the 84-inch that feeds it, we surcharge that area and then we've got sinkholes or, or voids that develop and then the street department or others have to go back and continue to fill those. And we'd just like to resolve that and we think this is a, a good compromise.
I thought we did a bunch, we did a bunch sewer line under the railroad track, didn't we? We did some new there back when I was on the council the last time, I'm pretty sure. I know we did.
Under the railroad?
On that 72-inch, we, we've worked on that 72-inch in the last 20 years, I'm sure.
It could be under the railroad, but right along the park there hasn't been.
Well, again, it was, my hope maybe there is a way to save money. But after I see the cost estimates for the proposed move of Pulaski to Strikers, it's a great deal more expensive than I thought it would be. And this was done, the estimate was in '04, it was over a million dollars, so.
But it sounds like it's time to do something.
Yeah.
After 40 years.
I'd like to see us do something rather than have it continue to sit and then it gets moved year after year or, you know, we just keep kind of kicking the can down the road. And I think this is an opportunity to solve, you know, a small section of our infrastructure problem, storm sewer problem. And that's really my interest here. But potentially we could do things that would benefit, you know, the kids that play Little League ball, so.
So you're looking for direction from council?
Right.
And it seems like the next step would be the drainage, would be the drainage study? And getting the cost estimates?
That's what we're suggesting here, right?
Yeah.
All makes sense.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
We don't, do we need a motion on that, Mayor?
Yes, you do, if you.
Yeah, I'll move that we proceed with the drainage study and the cost estimates. To update the cost estimates from the 1230, or 1203, 04.
Motion for drainage, drainage study? Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
This is 30,000?
20 to 30.
20 to 30, yeah.
Okay. All right, yes.
Waters?
Aye.
Number passes? Number 311, project number 45905, annual ice skating maintenance.
Page 192.
Report page 6. Discussion regarding additional capital funding for Floyd softball.
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. I also have an updated work plan that I will pass around.
And just to remind council, the Ball Association did come to the last hearing and requested that they took their operating contribution to the city and had it directed into the CIP. They have met with Matt Salvatore, Parks and Rec Director. And what he's passing out is what they came up with for a work plan.
So I met with Todd and Rita last Friday, Todd's here today as well. They kind of gave me a grocery list of some of their needs out there. I put, I prioritized some of the immediate leads, needs for FY19. We'll have to do a little bit more investigation as far as what that will actually cost. But I thought the 10,000 would be a good place to start to, to address some of those immediate needs. And then some of the items for FY20 and beyond, we'd have to do a lot more research to determine whether or not the, the 10,000 would be enough to move forward with some of those projects or if you would have to, to split it up into multiple projects. But so we would anticipate having a more refined work plan as we move forward and then determining on whether or not the 10,000 would be enough for those out years.
Appreciate that you're taking this on, Matt. But, but if my memory serves me, the mayor has brought up not only, I mean, not only this one, but all the, all the associations or entities that, that we contribute to. And I don't know if we're going to try to, are we trying to deal with that in the big picture right now?
The discussion that was brought up last time was just regarding Floyd softball specifically. All the other associations in that work plan get $3,000 that we reimburse them for their needs, annual needs at, at their various facilities.
Okay, so, so here's how I look at it. The Floyd softball pays $10,000 a year.
Correct.
So that 10,000 that, that we're looking at right now, it's, it's what they donate to begin, or is what they pay to begin with.
Correct.
I'd like to add another 10,000 to it so they can do some things moving, moving ahead. Because a lot of the stuff, I don't want to fall back and, and look like Lewis and Park, you know, Lewis and Clark, and have to be, you know, catch up. So I, I'd like to see more money put into their fund. So if they do have something come up, that it's already there. So I, I want to make it a line item.
Okay. So the lease payments are 10,000 a year?
Yep.
So under this, they'd have 13,000?
Correct.
Get 13.
Well, they get three of the other.
Oh, yeah, plus, okay.
Three pluses.
We, we've handled those $3,000 contributions to each of the various Little Leagues and organizations as kind of more of a reimbursement. We could continue to do that with them or they could apply it. We have no idea how much, how much some of this stuff is going to cost. So it may end up being a little bit more and we could spread that 13,000 out among these first four projects that were identified.
Well, first of all, just the LED, the LED lighting is at $10,000. You know, I mean, there, there goes their whole 10,000 right off the bat. So for me, the lighting's a big deal out there for the complex. Because they have tournaments every weekend. They have long night tournaments. And they also have, have their, their league play every night. So, you know, that's a big deal. The $10,000 LED is a big deal. The playground, that, that could be, that could be another big deal because during, during the week, families bring their kids. On the weekends, you have, we, you have families bringing their kids. And so, you know, we, we need, we need to keep them entertained. I just want to see things kept up and move forward.
Well, I don't hate to have a problem with that, Rhonda, but I go to Headed and watch my grandkids and quite frankly, that's an embarrassment to the community.
I'll second that.
You could drive down a gravel road that's dirtier than crap. The kids are all, nothing but filthy when they get done there.
Parking lots not.
The parking lot's a disaster.
Now, which one are you talking about?
Headed.
Headed, yeah. Well, hey, and, and.
And Center Street's not much better. And so how do you define?
I.
I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. I'm only saying that.
Sure, I understand what you're saying.
How do you, how do you justify Headed looking like it looks like? How do you justify Center, what it looks like? We gave all kinds of money to Riverside last year, if you remember. But we don't equalize that, that's not fair.
Well, this is why.
So when are we going to fair, when are we going to get fair, then I'm going to vote for this. I want to know when we're going to get fair today. Because I see, I see how we're going to get quiet zone in downtown, why the Leeds and Riverside once again get put off. And that vote will get put off, and that vote will get put off, and that vote will get put off. So when are we going to get fair? When are we going to do for Headed what we did for Riverside? When are we going to do for Headed or Center what we're doing for these guys? When are we going to do it? Because I want to know, I want to know that there's a sheet in this book that says that.
Okay, I, I want to make one point on that. First of all, the Floyd, the, the president is up, is here right now. They're being proactive, they're up here talking to us.
So are the others, but they, they've been told there's no money, Rhonda, that's the problem.
I haven't seen them.
They've been told there's no money. I understand, they've been paying rent since I played softball in 1972 out there. We've always paid rent because it was always meant to be an adult league. I'm not saying they should have to, I'm just saying that's reality. So I want to know what you got in the budget.
And that's a fair question, and I think we can address it, Mayor. And I think we should address it. And Donna, do you?
Okay, we will be talking about Headed when we talk about the Field Service Headquarters.
Okay.
We have a plan there that.
Do you remember how we came up with the $3,000 number?
That was just, it was just split, they came to the Parks and Rec Department in the past and presented their needs and then they, they sat down as a committee and split it up. And this is kind of where it's falling.
Because how many do we have?
There's nine different organizations.
Well, and Miracle Field would like to us, us.
Nine different organizations at 3,000, Matt?
Yep. And well, no, if you count Miracle, it's 10. 10. So there's $30,000 that was requested for FY19.
I understand all that, but here, my, my whole thing is Headed does, I understand where, I get where the mayor's coming from. But I'm also going to stick up for, for the complex because I myself have done tournaments out there for 30 years. I, I understand how important it is for, for us to keep this, this complex. And I, it brings in people, it brings in a lot of tourism. And people spend a lot of money and it's, it's from April until September. And Headed and those are not open that long, but yes, they do need to have an update, I get it. I just don't want to lose what we have because I'm telling you, it could go real easy. And, and we have people right now that, that are willing and, and actually take care of the park. And they just want to make sure that it's going to stay the way it is and move forward on it. So I, I think it's very important.
Well, and I think a big step in the right direction is reallocating this $10,000 to be put towards this. Like, I think that's a big positive step for this park. But I would agree with the mayor, I just, I have a hard time. And I go out to the ball fields a lot, I think, I think you have a lot of patronage up here, guys. But I think that I would have a hard time saying, well, we need to put another $10,000 towards this one without allocating more money to the others. I wonder if there needs to be some type of rotation or a schedule where it's, hey, we really need to update this park. Or maybe a needs assessment where we look at them and say, this is the one that's in most disrepair. This is where we need to allocate the funds this year to really bring it up. I mean, if we did, if we did Riverside last year, next is Headed, the next one is this, you know what I mean? So it's not just a blanket statement or, yeah, we need to give $10,000 because we see this right now. Or if we give 10,000 additional to the Floyd softball complex, you know, then why is this one being the change this year?
Okay, so, so do all these other, does Headed and all them pay rent?
That's a big difference, Rhonda. This was established as an adult park. And we knew when, I was there when we established this back, way back when.
I understand that, but there's also kids that play there too.
And we knew we were going to pay rent from the day we established it. Now, if we're forgiving the rent, I don't have a problem with that. But don't use that one because kids are not going to be able to pay, pay rent. They're not going to be able to. So that's, that, that's an argument.
And that's my whole point.
Well, the golf course never paid rent and we finally got them to pay rent because it's a more adult activity than it is kids.
Well, this is also a kids' activity. They, they have kids, kids.
Majority of this is an adult park, which, listen, I'm not arguing about that. I only ask the question, when are we going to get fair?
Matt, let me, yeah, let me ask you this.
I'm okay, I understand that part. I'm just, I'm fighting for, for the complex here because they are.
Well, I don't think anybody has a problem with what you're proposing. But I have a problem that we continue to do these things and don't take care of other ones.
But my question for Matt is.
Because there's so many needs. I mean, it's hard to spread our staff around our existing duties and then adding additional upon. We help where we can, but we can't help everybody with everything.
So if, if the city were to take on, undertake a project to improve one of these, like Headed, we'd have to get bids, but if Headed takes it on, they don't have to get bids.
Correct.
They can hire anybody they want.
Right.
Pay whatever they want.
And that's why this has always been handled kind of on more of a reimbursement basis.
Do you think your concerns would be addressed, Mayor, if we did put it on a rotating basis? So it's not a huge amount of money in one year, but it's spread out?
Or at least there was just a plan to address.
I just want a plan. I want a plan. I don't think the Center Street people should have to park in mud. I don't think the Headed people should have to park in dirt.
I totally, I agree.
If you make a five-year plan where you try to address one or two of them per year.
Well, you're not going to, I mean, it's going to be a 20-year plan because it's going to be a never-ending plan.
I agree.
Exactly.
Because by the time you get it done, it's going to be needed.
It's going to be started, you're going to start over again. And the toughest part will be to who you start with the first year.
And that's where I think there's like a needs assessment.
And some of them have been more proactive than others. Westside Little League has done a lot on their own. Morningside Little League does a lot on their own.
Well, they have, I mean, I'm not going to be a smart aleck here, but they have the advantage of having the Dakota Dunes people in their association. Not everyone has the luxury of having higher-income people. I mean, Morningside's blessed, I get it. But, you know, you're talking a small complex at, at Headed that serves a very small part of the, of the city, unfortunately. And so they don't have the resources necessarily that the rest of the, does that mean their, their complex should be any worse? I don't think so.
What we could do is take what you've suggested with putting together a park analysis and put that into the next year's CIP. There's not enough time this year, but we could formulate something for next year that gives Matt time to meet with everybody and come up with some type of a CIP program.
I think if we get a solid plan done, I think that would be, that would be the answer. I can support what's proposed by Matt and the Floyd softball people. I can support that, Rhonda.
Okay.
Would someone like to make?
With the 10 additional or with just the 10 being allocated to their plan, their work plan?
Well, I, I, I think for now, if they've agreed to, you've agreed to this plan that Matt's presented to us.
Presenting the 10.
I just think for now, till we get that plan in effect, if we, if we could go with this. I mean, this is a big step in the right direction.
Exactly, that's my thought, is at least then you're getting the 10 to be put towards this reinvestment in this field. I mean, that's, that's what I was trying to say is I think that's a huge step in the right direction. And then hopefully we can do more additionally in the future.
Could I have a motion, please?
Yep, I'll, I'll make a motion to add the additional capital funding for Floyd. Well, not additional, the.
The transfer.
The transfer.
For the lease.
Yeah, for the lease.
Or whatever.
Do you need a second?
Second.
The motion is to reallocate funds for capital for Floyd.
The, the lease payment of 10,000.
Yes.
Um, Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Sure, I don't want to make Rhonda mad today.
That's right, that's not pretty.
Aye.
Capron?
Yes, aye.
He's making up to you for Monday.
Yeah, he should.
The number four, project 459055, annual ICP ice center. We're working that 2020 work plan, they're including signage. The original page on 204 and the report page on page 7.
So how long is their naming rights, forever? Another one of these forever?
I think so, I can, I can look into that, I think it's a lot like.
Well, I think you need to look at that because.
I think it's in perpetuity too, if I recall, Mayor.
You what?
I think it goes in perpetuity, I think it's forever, I think.
I think Don Wolfie did that one too.
We should look at it, but, but what's the obligation of that? Or has that just been paid and met and?
Exactly, and then no one else can ever get naming rights of it.
I think that's a question that you have to ask your legal department and yourself, Mr. Attorney. But I don't think, I don't think they are forever, I really don't.
I will, I will check.
Okay.
I will check the agreements.
Lots of cases that say they're not forever.
Well, how long has this been?
1997 is.
Forever?
97 is when, they're typically 20 years.
If they're not forever, they're typically then what, for a 20, 25-year term? But we'll, we'll check. I, I just rely heavily.
Agreement to begin with, and anybody that was here, including myself, that should have asked the question then. Foolishness.
Of how long it was going to go or?
Well, I, I hope I'm around long enough that I can talk about myself that way someday.
Well, when you make dumb decisions, you should pay the price. And this is a dumb decision. You never do a naming right. There's not been an arena in America, only in Sioux City, that has a naming right that's never in. They all have, they get renamed, you know why? Because they get another 20, 50 million dollars.
But typically, don't they have the option to renew it? So that, so they can stay with it and there might be some money that comes with that.
I would want them to renew it if they're going to give more money to the signage. That's what I'm saying, is I want them or someone else to come to the table.
First place, ICP doesn't exist anymore.
So there's nothing, yeah, there's nothing to do on this item then, at this point?
This was not a, well, there is something to do, this, think about this, this is not a Tyson agreement. I think the question does need to be asked.
Right, but there's no council action needed on this.
Well, there is for me, I want to find a new naming right. If you want new signs, go find a new namer.
I'll check the agreements and then before we would enter anything into the 2020 work plan, we would have that information.
You know where the agreement is?
Uh, I've, I, I can get it.
Would you like to see this back for wrap-up?
I would.
Yeah.
I would bring it back for the 21st.
Yeah, but I'm not putting any money on this one, Mayor.
Well, let me ask you this, Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir.
If something doesn't exist.
Who's going to fight it?
I mean, do you pay alimony to a deceased wife? It ceases it.
It, yeah.
When, when it.
Well, you don't, do you?
Well, but then, but paralegal, but you as a paralegal have advised me to put in all the agreements its successors and assigns. So it could be.
I didn't tell you that.
I was told there was a very small division of IPP that still exists out there down south somewhere. But we, so we'd have to check on that too.
Okay.
You'll follow up on it?
Yeah.
We'll bring it back for wrap-up.
Yeah.
All right, number five, project 459214, splash pad on the 6th page.
Yeah.
On page 222, report page 8.
Did a little bit of research on this one regarding the flooding, Cook Park Splash Pad for Ice Skating. Great idea. The one main difference between this splash pad and one that we have out at Cone Park is you have the above-ground features that are an obstacle that would cause issues, obviously, with ice skating. So that's the main difference. Um, so that's the main difference between this, which would make it impossible to try to create something there.
That's what you were trying to tell us in your last sentence of your.
Yes.
Memo.
Yep, those above-ground features. If it was a spray, ground plays only similar to Cone Park, then it'd be a lot easier to do. You can install the bumper and.
Would it be possible to just do like we do at Lee Ferriksen or did at Hubbard Park, just?
You'd have to create, uh, you'd either do it in the parking lot or create, um, just an indentation in the parkland to, to flood like we do at Lee. That's a lot more feasible.
Yeah. To just at least give them the opportunity during winter months.
That's what I'm thinking too, is if there was some creative way that we could do something, even if it was, and, and I don't know what features will be in the splash pad here, but you almost wish there was a cover or something that you could put over them so they're not hazards.
Yeah. Well, and it was just the surface area being able to skate is the main thing. But the bumper, it, it's obviously much bigger at Cone Park, but the bumper that, that was purchased for, for there was approximately 33,000 installed. So we'd have to look at something probably a little bit more economical.
Okay, thanks for checking on that for us.
Is the ice skating rink open down below?
We're making, we're making ice. You mean at Cone? Yeah, we're making ice right now. We're going to, there's a possibility we can have it open by the weekend. So it depends on how the ice making.
You told us the middle of January. I don't remind you of that.
Keep reminding the contractor as well.
Are we, are we having a ribbon cutting so some of us could be on skates to do it?
Yeah, I still would like to do a ribbon cutting. I think we'll get it open and then have the ribbon cutting afterwards.
Is it accessible? I can pull him around.
The mayor might.
Am I going to have to hold your hand?
Yeah. That's the problem we have here.
I will keep it rolling.
I keep rolling. Thank you, Mayor.
Number six, project 709008, downtown one-way to two-way conversion. CIP page 279, report page nine.
And the question that came up at wrap-up was what it would cost to have Douglas converted?
Yes.
That was. There is, uh, they removed a bunch of items, including some pavement improvements and things of that nature. And they did break one out for Douglas. Uh, the only thing was, is in, in the memo I provided, I'm a little concerned about what they have for signal modifications because the signals at Fifth and Sixth, I think, would be, have to be totally redone. I don't think $35,000 in rehab on those would, uh, would do it. And I'm not sure if some of those costs were included in their, in the, the cost they had for Fifth and Sixth Street also being modified. They did call for the lights on Seventh, Tenth, and Fourteenth to be removed. I think Seventh probably wouldn't be a big issue. I wouldn't be surprised if, uh, healing schools and the church was concerned about Tenth Street and Fourteenth Street. I would definitely want to have a hard look at that one before I definitely say we could remove that one.
Well, I raised the question and, um, I just thought if we're going to get serious about two-way, and there's still confusion, I think.
Yeah, I think Douglas is very confusing because it's two-way at the south end and then it goes to one-way all the way up to 18th Street and then goes back to two-way. I think definitely it makes sense to convert that street. So it's two-way all the way. Plus, it doesn't have a, uh, it doesn't.
Place that down.
And it, it doesn't have an opposite direction one-way. It doesn't have the, a pair to go with it. It doesn't have a southbound pair to go with it. So, you know, Nebraska pairs with Pierce. Pearl used to pier, or Gramve used to pier with Douglas, but it doesn't any longer, so.
So your estimate's $650,000?
That's where I would think we would be when, with the signal modification, because I think we'd need totally new. We'd have to bring, the signals that are out there now aren't up to current day standards. The poles aren't in the right location to have them in both directions. So there'd be a lot, I don't think $35,000 in modifications were covered and that's what the Olson estimate had.
I guess the question I'd have for my fellow council members is, would that be a step in the right direction to eventually get to a two-way on Fifth and Sixth? Or does it not have anything to do with Fifth and Sixth? But it just seems like Douglas would be a good start.
I think it's almost independent of Fifth and Sixth, although if we redid the signals at Fifth and Sixth, I definitely want to have them set up so they could be easily done if we so choose to go with Fifth and Sixth also.
But Fifth and Sixth is, that would be a lot more.
That's a lot more because you have more signals.
Yeah.
And, and most of them are, have to stay. I think they only called for one signal to be removed and I think that was Sixth and, um, Jennings maybe, or Sixth and Jones, or, that must be Jennings because I don't think Jones goes through. Or maybe it was Virginia.
No, Jones doesn't go through.
Or maybe it's Virginia. Sixth and Virg, I have to go back like I started. There's only one signal in all the Fifth and Sixth that they're looking at and removed. And unfortunately, happens to be the only signal that's new.
Jennings, I think.
Yeah.
Jennings. Virginia doesn't go through either. It's Jennings.
So to Dan's point, there's no cost-saving by doing, by thinking of this holistically. It would just be, this would be independent and then we could move into Fifth and Sixth if we wanted to or so chose.
So your estimate of 650 would be, uh, everything included? Well, your additional cost is just for the signals, the 340 in paragraph one.
I adjusted it for inflation and then the, the additional 300,000 I had in there was based on, I would think it'd be another 100, it'd be more closer to 200,000 per intersection to put brand-new signals up at both those intersections.
In the first paragraph that the Olson provided estimates as a follow-up to concerns regarding the cost, these estimates stripped all the paving improvements and street scapeing costs for the project.
Yep.
Are you including those now in yours?
Those are stripped out.
They're still stripped out.
That $10 million dream.
Yeah. Yeah, it was 10 million plus.
It was, it was the staff's way of making sure you never voted for it.
Oh, okay.
They threw everything at it they possibly could throw.
I wasn't here at the time. I can't speak to it.
I remember that.
Well, I can.
Were they talking about doing the road all the way up, brand-new?
Oh, by trails and.
Boulevard look and.
Like trees and bushes.
Downtown Partners would be proud of.
Yeah, something we would have won many awards for.
Yeah. It was 10 million included Fifth and Sixth also.
Yep. Yeah. But it also was.
There was a lot in there.
I remember that.
Why, why did we do Douglas again? Why do we make that two-way from?
Because the Hard Rock.
It's part of the agreement.
Was part of their agreement. They wanted two-way traffic off the, off the bridge.
What do you think about taking it up to Fourteenth Street?
I have no opinion anymore on this.
No, you'd have to go all the way to Eight.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Or the, oh, to Eighteenth. Yeah, Fourteenth is where the signal.
Is the last signal, yes.
You really don't?
No, I care, I don't care anymore. I bought the spot long enough. It's not time somebody else fights the fight.
What do the rest of you think?
It would probably be, uh, convenient. I, I don't know that it'll increase. I don't know that the traffic flow now with the, the, the main arteries that come downtown and, uh, Pierce and Jackson, really, I guess. I don't know if the third street's all that necessary. But the hard part is the confusion.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Two blocks, then, you know, back up and it's.
Well, and, and also they, they've talked about how when we change it, that'd be good for the, for the people downtown. Well, how many businesses is it really going to affect downtown?
All the public buildings.
You know, I mean, yeah, but we're talking business, businesses and, and.
You got more costs too, Dave, because are you going to fully diagonal parking, letting people back out in front of here?
We have to, we, there'd be painting costs.
I'll tell you what, when they, when they first brought this up, it's, it was scary, as Bob would say.
We change it to back-end angle parking.
The money blew us away. I don't know.
Well, and that's where I struggle. I'm, I'm a fan of, uh, two-way parking, especially looking at a Fifth and Streets. Fifth and Sixth, I think that that's, that could be, I see some real benefit. But Douglas, I think it's really confusing. But other than that, there aren't a lot of businesses or, and I don't know, maybe I'm just not seeing as much benefit as those other streets of having a two-way there.
The hospital has a fight in this too. So that, that was the other side of it.
For?
For Six. For two, for two-way.
Are you talking for Sixth or for Douglas?
Uh.
For Sixth.
Sixth, right.
Yeah. Exactly. So like those streets, I understand and I would feel more warranted throwing a lot of money at a project like that. Whereas with Douglas, it's like, well, it's really confusing and probably extraordinarily poorly designed and laid out. But do we want to pay six and a half to right that wrong?
Well, the other missing piece, I think, would be having public hearings on it and getting input from the businesses and the people.
Oh, we already had that. I mean, we heard a lot, but I.
What was that? You mean for Fifth and Sixth and everything like that?
It was for and against.
But it was for those other streets, not necessarily just Douglas, correct?
Correct.
And keep in mind, we are, we're right up at our bottom capacity right now at almost 70%.
Well, I'm, I'm actually thinking maybe moving this into like 2020 or.
Well, it's not in there now.
No, it's in the out years.
It's in the out years.
And then moving it up to 2020 or 21, 2021, or at least.
Here's though, we're still heavy in debt too.
Is this something we want to take a stronger look at next year and bring, maybe reconsider for next year's CIP?
And get some public input on it. Yeah, I think that's important too. The input from Downtown Partners as well, Reagan. Just on Douglas. And it, and it is important, but it, and I don't know, I don't know how many accidents have occurred on Douglas.
No, the, they, the study had very few accidents on either of the streets regarding, uh, wrong-way, one-way traffic. There, I, I want to say there was eight, I think, in the 10-year period they studied on all three of the streets. I couldn't tell you Douglas off the top of my head.
I'm okay deferring it or doing some further studying on it, Dave, if you'd follow up on that.
Yep, we can do that.
Part of your workload. Okay, thank you.
Seven, project 728012, annual lifting ramp repairs.
We had questions about how the first hour free was going and it's, the data's a little skewed, unfortunately, for the fact that during the same time Discovery Ramp had issues with their gatearms, so their revenues are way down. It's, skews it off. But the fact is, is if you look at the other, if you take Discovery out, I think it really shows our parking numbers are up. Our revenues are slightly down, but not down as much as we had anticipated. Just because when we anticipated, we just took the first hour free out. We didn't account for any additional parkers. And, uh, so I, I, you know, this is just the first three months of data. We got three more months to go on our six-month trial that we had put out there. And I, I, like I said, I, I think it's probably going pretty good.
Good.
No questions on that one?
No, thank you.
Just, just one second.
Sure.
Your project, no, I understand it. Go ahead.
Or number eight, project number 8905, city fuel island, CIP period 340, report page 13.
Uh, Pete had asked about the, you know, the Fuel Island Replacement Project, which has been going on way too long. About the canopy initially. I think the concept plan had a canopy included. Unfortunately, when our first cost estimate started coming back in, that were two and a half times what our budget was for it. And that was one of the items we cut. The canopy's probably about 90 to 100,000 dollars in costs, including the foundations. But I think with the, with the viability of, of the 18th Street facility, long-term viability, I'm not sure I want to invest this kind of money, additional money into having a canopy that, we don't have a canopy over the islands now.
Is there any land right around you that you could buy to do a fuel yard or anything?
Could buy it as an outside source, like just go to a fuel station?
No. No, like across the street.
Move it to a different place.
Oh, move to.
Fuel yard there.
I mean, I'm.
Well, if you, it's better to spend on land than you would on a, on a plant that you know is going to, over time, be a higher maintenance item.
Well, that, that was one of the things about, you know, with the above-ground tanks, they would be relocatable. You know, that's the one nice thing is we're going to go to above-ground tanks because the, that, that was one of the things that was killing us. Was on our costs is when we got into contaminated soils, how much soils we'd have to take out to put the new tanks in was just driving our costs. I mean, so we went to above-ground tanks. Those would be, we'd be able to relocate the above-ground tanks.
I understand how all that works, but they also have heavy weight.
Yeah.
You're on shifting sands out there. It's actually shifting garbage. So that long-term, you still have to take the pipe underground. You have to do all that stuff. And long-term, you're creating another maintenance nightmare.
Potentially, yes.
So the question is, across the street, I don't think it was a landfill.
No, don't believe.
From our discussion, we thought maybe there was some soil issues there because we've been talking about with the field headquarters and.
I don't think so.
But we can double-check.
I don't think that was a landfill.
I can go back and see what they've done for the foundations on these tanks.
Yeah, to the mayor's point, though, the soils are, are bad enough that, I mean, the canopy structure, if you add that to it, it's, it's not going to be safe.
No, it, it would be separate. I mean, it's actually a separate structure. The canopy's foundations are separate from that of the fuel tanks.
Wouldn't you be making an investment in something that you know you're going to have to move and eventually things will shift?
Well, we'll, okay. And then we'll talk about this more. There's a, could possibly the whole CMG or the whole.
Yeah.
So it's going to shift, so that's where.
And if you don't mind, if we could segue into that, because I think it's relevant, this whole discussion.
Is that number nine?
And Stan and Rick, you guys want to come up?
Is that on number nine on our agenda?
Because this really does tie together.
You okay with that, Pete?
I have a number nine.
Yes, absolutely.
Project 889008, city operations facility, J F U page 344.
Morning, Rick. Good morning, Stan.
We were asked to, to intervene and do some soil borings, see if there's an opportunity somewhere on the existing 18th Street site to build a facility. And it kind of ties into the conversation you just had with Mr. Carney. Um, anything to the 30, well, about 27 feet to 45 feet. So then we bought on the opposite side of the central maintenance garage. And you ran into garages a little better. It was about 22 feet to 35 feet, but it's still heavily loaded with garbage except for one of 12 borings. And that is closest to Ed's shop. So looking at that, it kind of rules that out as an option for us. The city does have the property from the Sioux Tractor Sweep Brake. That is about an equal amount of property as the existing utility building. And then as the mayor had a discussion yesterday about the layout, or earlier about the layout of the Headed Park. Uh, if we did a land swap and transferred Headed Park to landfill, lightweight, not a lot of, uh, or the 18th Street site, not a lot of, um, loading onto the.
Putting the kids on a dump, aren't you, Rick?
There's a lot of cities that do do that. There are a lot of cities that do, do do that, Bill, and, um, landfills. And have great support facilities. But if we did do that, there's an equal amount of land between that and the Sioux Tractor Sweep Brake property the city currently owns. Um, and if we could get the parcel of land that's kind of surrounding it in the center that's owned by Knife River, a nice complex could be laid out there. And that is an option we have been pursuing. We're also looking at a short-term fix for the existing utility building, taking the back hot, half off of it, moving that back wall forward, getting rid of the bent beam and the bent, uh, center beam that supports the, the peak of the roof. And moving everything forward. Uh, we looked at options for filling underneath it and that didn't seem feasible on a cost-effective basis. But certainly moving that wall forward and relocating some of the vehicles for the short term until we could come up with a long-term solution.
Well, I appreciate, you said only one of the 12 soil borings was clean, or was clean?
That is correct. And that was the one closest to, uh, the Public Works Office Building and shop.
Let me, let me tell you where I think I am with this, because I think it's time to actually, and I appreciate that you're moving forward on a new building, new facility, which I think we desperately need. And I think we're all concerned about the safety of the people that actually are out there on the site. I think we've all acknowledged that. But the thing I don't want to do, at least from my perspective, Rick, is to, uh, I, I don't want to, I, I, for the, for the safety feature, there's some emergency there. So those are the steps you're taking that would be temporary or short-term. But I just don't want to do a Band-Aid approach, try to fix something and say that's good enough for what, for what they need to do a really, you know, good operation and have a solid operation. So I'd, I'd want to pursue the other sites as quickly as we could and try to move that up. And I know the mayor in the past has mentioned. And I know the mayor in the past has mentioned a couple of sites. And there's another one at, I think that was a KD Station site, but I think there's also one at, I think at Ruston. Was it Ruston?
There's a site between, that won't be big enough to make the Taj Mahal, but it'd be big enough for utilities, which is falling apart. It's between Brower and CAP Reclamation.
But the site, so I think you're on the right track, but I, what I'm suggesting, at least from my perspective, is, is to move forward with it and you'd have my support on that. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I, I've been out there a few times and, and, you know, I just, I grew up in a situation where my parents would always say, if you wouldn't work there, don't expect others to work there. And it just, and it isn't good, but you've acknowledged that. I mean, I'm preaching to the choir here, so I appreciate what you're proposing and what you're doing. But I would like to get a site that we could actually start building, a new building and a facility that would, that would actually work.
Under all the discussions we've been having is we recognize CMG is going to need to be moved, even though it's on steel beams at some point. That building is not efficient for the big equipment nowadays. So what we're looking at is the whole facility, not just utility building, because there is the need to keep them together.
There's no, there's other towns where the parks, the streets are separated.
Yeah, but the department has one we've been talking and they've been included is to keep, to keep everything close together because it does have some efficiencies. You know, the Fuel Island, the, the buildings, the storage sheds. And so we want to make sure we treat everybody.
You're going to cut part of it off, spend the money to brace it up, move, have Ed move part of his equipment out, so we can move part of our equipment there. Keep part of our equipment over there, us be up in CMG for an office. Street Division don't have a big enough lunchroom or break area to accommodate utility guys over there. Our building's falling apart fast. And who says when you brace it, it ain't going to. And I understand you got to keep it under a million dollars. You buy land, there goes, there goes your money. And so we're pushed back even farther. And then I, then I, I've got understood there was questions, do they need to have restrooms? Really?
Where, where?
I got told that there was, there was brought up about, do they need to have restrooms to then bring the restrooms in? I mean.
I, I believe all of our discussions we've had was to have restroom facilities, have break room, have everything that you currently have.
I know, but you move us the streets right now, move Ed's stuff out, so his spreaders are out in the weather. And they're getting, the salt's getting hardened up. There's not enough room for us in a lunchroom and a break room for to accommodate everybody.
What the intention was right now is we would tear the back half of your building off so that your current facility could survive until we moved you.
How much money you're going to put into it where you could use that to build a new, start getting land? We got, we got land we own and start building a new facility.
Yeah, but we are also up against the bond limit here. So something's got to give here, guys. If you want to start this project, you're going to have to figure out how you're going, what you're willing to give up here.
Well, we also have state law that we cannot, where it currently is located, unless it's in an urban renewal area, we cannot borrow more than a million dollars. It's the same argument we had with the police fire headquarters.
Right.
Well, you're going to exceed that, aren't you, Donna? But if you combine, yeah, but if you combine utilities and streets, you're going to exceed that.
Right.
We couldn't fund it through utility funds though.
It's still general obligation debt. It would have to be a revenue bond.
We sell it as that way. We could sell it as a different type of bond.
It would have to be a revenue bond.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're still, how many, how much debt do you want? Because you're ninety.
That's the issue.
Ninety-eight million, I hear in this one?
Yeah.
That's a little more than I'm comfortable with, but I guess if you're okay.
I mean, fire owes us some money anyway since they took over a building we paid for, so.
I mean, our first concern when we have had these discussions in the last few months was one, to make everybody safe. Make sure the equipment that needed to be inside was inside and then give us a chance to do a comprehensive search for where it was best to be located. Make sure we're looking out for our taxpayers for the next twenty years so that we're making something, not a knee-jerk reaction, but we actually have a very good comprehensive plan and have everybody buying in.
Well, and I don't think you're going to realistically do that under one roof. And the reason I say that is because it's not cheaper to go bigger necessarily.
I don't think the intention was bigger. It was to have separate buildings.
When they did this plan, it was one big building.
And we've gone from that since then. We're.
And, and, and if you don't divide them up, it's going to be hard to determine what's utilities, what's Public Works.
No, I think our first intention was if we do pick the Headed Site was move the utility portion. You know, do it in modules so that we can keep within the million dollar type funding source.
If we do the, if we do the Headed, because that would be a land swap, because I, I still think we should use city-owned land that we already own. Why would we pay for any?
That reduces the cost.
Yeah, why would we pay for any land? And the KD Station site and the Ruston site probably wouldn't be big for the, big enough for the two of them anyway, with what the mayor's saying.
Well, since we do own the, the land from the Sioux Tractor Sweep Brake and it is a little bit larger than the current utility land. We certainly could move into building a building there, leaving the utilities, piping and stuff that currently is on the existing site. While the building is built and then as we progress along, if we choose to move Headed, it becomes a good plan of doing it in steps rather than trying to do it. They're still talking about it. And the mayor's right, the, the last proposal was for building everything together and, and that may not be as cost-effective. But this is a good way of moving utilities building forward and still having a plan for relocation of Headed and relocation of central maintenance garage. The firm that did the soil borings and stucco casts nor steel pile are going to last long in that abrasive soil either. So at some point, you're going to have to deal with relocating central maintenance garage for sure. Ed's facility may be fine, but moving to this location would seem like it makes some good sense because you're close enough to Ed's facility as well.
God, maybe you could finally pave the road into Headed Park. It won't be because it's Headed Park. It's because you guys will want the road paved, but that's okay. I'll accept it that way.
Or we relocate Headed Park to the existing area that utilities locates and lay out a better field for them with a better road.
And I don't know how.
I don't know how you build a concession stand there.
Yeah, where we got our pipe pile, or you can see our pipes sinking in the ground. I mean, you put a ball field on there.
But the ball field, the argument is the ball field wouldn't be as heavy as those pipes.
When you lay out your master plan there, I would like to see how you would use Brower's Road, if that's possible, if it's not their road, or at least ask them. So you've got another way out of there. Don't, because if you go just off of Hawkeye and you start sending all those trucks out, that's not a real solution to me either. So you need a, you need a back road out of that facility when you build it. And, and Brower has that road in there. And see if it's possible to tie that road all the way to your complex would be ideal. So you've got.
You can look at that.
A secondary road out of there.
Sure.
I don't know how. Is that Illinois Street? That road you're talking about?
I don't know if it's their road or our road. I think it's their private road.
Is it?
Or they build it anyway, I think.
I don't.
Doesn't run to the ballpark.
It doesn't?
No.
How far up does it go?
To their gate.
To their gate? I don't know how serious the earlier comments were about, philosophically, I'd, I'd really want to be careful about putting anything on a landfill. And you say all other cities are doing it, but I don't know if cities do it, do it as safely as what Sioux City would want to do it.
Well, that was a plan out seriously in Riverside was to make it park because you've got three foot of cover on it. So the, there's not issues with that. My concern would be how do you build a concession stand and make it work? You're going to have to.
You might have to take.
You're going to have to build it on the very west side of the property somehow, and the ball parks, the way you're talking are on the east side. And that's why we have, even a small, even a small animal shelter, we abandoned because it, we couldn't maintain it. So I don't know that that's a, I'm not as concerned about the landfill as I am the long-term maintenance of things because they continue to settle.
And philosophically, it, it makes some good sense, but it may not make some good sense looking at it in more detail. And we may have to look at another option. It's just, is council supportive of that type of solution where we would relocate the Headed Ball Fields?
All right, well, I think you.
I have one question.
I think you need to lay out a master plan of that area.
Have you checked the soil on the, on the ball field? Right now, we're just doing soil.
Worth that now? I mean, that land's all good, right?
The soil by the ball field should be good. There used to be a city wild field, but we are intending on doing borings there.
Okay.
Well, there's no problem there. That's not, the landfill didn't go that far.
Okay.
So walk me through this again, Rick, one more time. If we went to Headed, how does that, just overall, how does that play out? I mean, so we do a trade or what?
We currently own about six acres of land, so we could relocate the utility field office as the first step. And then decide what we want to do, as, as the mayor said, for a master plan of laying out what we can do and where we would put Headed. And open up the Headed Fields and work with Knife River to acquire that one parcel of land would allow us the same amount of property that the current Eighteenth Street site has. So then we could lay out a relocation of central maintenance garage, since it is the one that is having the issues with the underground tanks. And if we needed to, we can relocate Public Works. Their soil is decent. Their sand's solid ground, so there shouldn't be a problem there. But that could be the long-term if we want to relocate the entire campus.
But you'd start with.
There's enough land between Headed, a little parcel Knife River owns and the land the city ready owns.
So the only land acquisition would be Knife, the Knife River?
Just a portion.
Just a portion of it?
Very small portion. They have.
In between the ball, they got that gated area. There's some equipment in there.
They just acquired that back with a, with an economic development deal.
How soon would you have that plan?
If council's supportive of this, it becomes our top priority.
Would you still look at other sites?
We can certainly investigate the site that Mr. DeHardy is talking about, but that limits you to just relocating utilities. We have investigated the land the city owns on Twenty-Eighth Street, but that becomes cost prohibitive to get utilities up to it and still standard at million dollar.
Cap.
And this land is in a. Tiff district?
We just have to check on the purposes with bond counsel.
So there may be an opportunity to use additional funding to make it happen?
What were you saying that we would do with the, where utilities is now to make the landfill? You said put a cover on it or something?
Party has a cover technically. Had a cover on it, so that's what we did out to.
Before you build on it, you mean?
We don't build on it. You can never really technically build on it. We did, but that was not a licensed landfill. But like in Riverside where it was a licensed landfill, you put a cover on it. You can always put parks and things like that in it. You just can't allow construction to occur on it.
Do you have to, do you have to have any piping or anything that would let the gases escape? You don't?
We do out there just because we're required to monitor.
As methane.
A monitor, yeah.
Just, but we're not required on this one because it was an illegal landfill.
Right.
So how does the concession stand out there work?
There isn't one. There's nothing out in Riverside. I said that, it's up above. It's up by Woodbury Heights.
And we did have discussion at, at one of our meetings about maybe with the concession stand, because it's a smaller footprint, that the pilings wouldn't be extremely expensive.
Well, I mean, twenty seven feet sounds like a lot, but you can go, we're making it sound like it's a big deal, but you can go in and excavate twenty seven feet of garbage and fill it in. They do it all the time. They find these pockets of landfills all over Sioux City. They go in and over-escavate. We make it sound like it's impossible to do, but it's not.
And so that's why we still felt that the Headed Park relocation could work there.
We got Tyson on a, on a landfill, for God's sake.
Then they over-escavate it and they haul stuff out and they over, they over-expand.
So you could do that just on the concession stand area is what you're saying?
Right, yeah. Correct, yeah, you'd have to, keep in mind when you dig down twenty seven feet and you got a twenty by twenty concession area, you're actually probably going to have to dig fifty by fifty, twenty seven feet deep. Because you're, to get, no hoe is going to go down twenty seven feet and, and dig that, so you're going to have to over-escavate the area. But it's not like it's the end of the world. We, we make it sound like it's a major, I mean, you could tear that utility building down where it's at and over-escalade.
Good, yes. Estimated cost of doing that would be about a half million dollars to prep the soil to build a new building. Because you have to go out a certain distance further out than you go down.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Like I said, I have no problem doing the head shop temporarily, but nobody's thinking of the long terms, like our locker, the utility guys' lockers, all their equipment, where we're going to store everything. We just going to make piles and label them? I mean, nobody's really thought, thought of that aspect of it. My main concern is the safety of myself and the guys I work with in that building. Because those jet trucks are heavy and every time you go over those panels, you feel it.
Chris, we're working on getting those trucks out right now. So I think that's going to be solved here very shortly.
Like I said, I don't, I understand it's a safety issue. We, we have to move Ed's trucks out, but I know I've seen it before. This is temporary and like the trailer we got, that was only supposed to be temporary for the supervisors and it's been over fifteen years.
I support that you move forward as promptly as possible, get a permanent solution.
And Rick have been looking at the building to make sure that the doorways will fit the equipment coming in. And if not, to make the retrofit to get those in, we've taken the equipment list between the two departments and made sure those that needed to be in the buildings would all fit. So we're talking very shortly.
Like weeks?
Less, probably weeks if the, if the equipment doors work right now with the equipment.
We don't have to make any modifications, so we can, we can move forward.
So we're, we met on Tuesday to talk about the equipment list, so they are moving forward.
I just wanted to give Chris a kind of a timeline because it sounds like the timeline that he gets isn't.
Because all the utility guys, we met this morning, we discussed the building and they're willing to show up to every council meeting every Monday. Their voice therapy and to get something.
Well, Chris, they can show up, but the reality is we cannot build a building in a week.
Yeah, I know.
So, I mean, have them show up, but I'm sorry, but.
But they just seem.
You know, this is a problem that has been ongoing and all of a sudden, we're expected to have a solution and I don't even know all the problems out there, so you got the wrong guy.
They just expect because it's been ignored for so long.
Well, it sounds like we're going to have a solid plan though, going, going forward and we'll have maybe a timeframe, timetable with it, mayor, so.
I have a boring schedule for next Thursday. As you're, to get the equipment open up to get in and do the borings at this site we're talking about and Headed Park as well.
I was going to say, I hope it doesn't sound like we're just sitting on our hands, Chris.
No.
Sounds like we're being pretty proactive as a council and as a staff.
I've met with council about it. You guys come out and looked at the building.
Yeah, and I'd appreciate, you know, you're going to continue to work with John and, and Chris and, and the other ones.
Dave and, Dave and I and Ed and John are meeting Monday morning.
Who is? I'm sorry.
Dave and, and I and Ed and John.
Ed and John, okay.
Meeting Monday morning. That'll be one of our topics, so.
Because I really need to have you work together to keep this on track.
Sounds good, Rick.
And then can we get periodically updates so we know where we're at and what we're doing?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Awesome.
And I'll remember to print them too.
And read them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been reading them.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other additional discussion items?
Mayor?
Yes.
Do you have any additional?
No.
Discussion items?
No.
You need a motion on?
I thought he was saying.
Not yet.
Oh, we took separate motions, didn't we?
We took separate motions. Okay. Next, we'll go through the technical changes real quickly. This is where items have gone up or down or things have been moved around or added. We talked about when Admin Services was here with the AV room upgrades, that the estimate was short. Mike has presented some changes to the work plan for a city building repair that transferred a hundred and ten thousand dollars over to the AV room to make that funded. That's item ten and eleven. And Mike can really quickly, you want to just update everybody again on what you did?
Sure. On the original work plan, we reduced the overall asking by fifty thousand and we reprioritized some things. So initially we had LEDs in the FY nineteen year. We moved up some of the HVAC needs instead and then transferred some of that.
HVAC?
Yes.
Okay.
And then transferred some of that LED that was planned into the AV upgrades because the cost estimate that we got, you know, a couple of weeks ago was updated. So overall, we reduced fifty thousand. So overall, we reduced fifty thousand and shifted some money to AV upgrades and HVAC.
And so what, you're proposing we have better TV equipment? Is that the deal?
It's all the, the backroom equipment for this council chambers, projector, cameras.
And that's how much money?
Two-ten is the estimate.
And all?
New voting software.
New voting software. It'll also redesign the council's back desk area there.
Here?
Yes.
You know the flaw of this design? And you'll make the same mistakes on it. That's why I'm telling you now.
Okay, good.
Seriously, why does a council member not have a drawer here with a lock on it?
Can't answer that.
Do you understand, Stan? I don't wanna have to go down to the city manager's office and look in a file drawer to keep my budget books and those sort of things, or if I have something that I don't want everybody else to see. This is the only, only meeting deal I can imagine that doesn't have a desk drawer for you to, I mean, we don't have offices here.
Well, the redesign does take away those, the supports underneath, so there's more free space underneath, so easily could create some of that space.
I just, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'd like to have a drawer here that we could lock stuff in that.
To keep your own personal things.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. I never thought of that. Put him in a closed session room.
If you just had a drawer, if you're modifying this whole thing, so if you are modifying the whole thing.
Yes.
What, what would be the big deal to design a drawer into the side here?
I just wanna make sure we have enough room with everybody sitting up there. If we start putting drawers.
Now, that's a problem. When you do P and Z, you don't have enough room. Bad idea.
It'd be nice.
You put something that is that back wall.
But then it's not individual, is what he's saying.
No, you can have individual.
Yeah.
You need five.
What is that thing even for? Put donuts on?
Don't get rid of that, please. Keep it, Stan.
Yeah, I mean, what, what purpose is that? That's a good idea.
It serves no purpose.
Decorative.
Again, I was here when we designed it. Must've been my idea.
We'll end right behind you.
All right.
It's a buffet table.
Unbelievable cost for that. I, I find that just unbelievable.
And we had an independent company design the specs and give us the cost estimate to, before we go out for bid on something like that, after we get approval, to move forward with the plan.
Well.
Well, we definitely need an update.
The, the equipment really was updated with, just with cameras ten years ago. Other than that, the equipment's original to the building in ninety-seven.
And so what, what equipment does it encompass with that part of it? As far as the technology side of it?
Here. Involves the, the cameras. We would replace the projector.
What cameras or which specifically ones?
All the camera positions.
Okay.
The projector that's currently right up here. You got the media center, which is located back in the AV room. You got new microphones. You got a lot of.
Wireless.
Touchscreens. Two monitors, the touchscreens that are in the back room, the amplifiers. Lot of cabling because all the new equipment would be cabled.
Spinning like a drunken sailor, aren't you, Stan?
I try.
We want this a lot nicer for the next councils that come around, Bob.
There's a three-year support agreement as part of that. Yeah, you got character generator. I mean, you got, I can actually let you see this. Yeah. I can actually let you see this whole, there's three pages of, it's all technical stuff. Yeah, we can email it out. See you have the detail.
All right, we're gonna take a five-minute break here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fund the difference. When we got estimates, they were short called Brad Pitts is here. He can address this issue.
Brad Pitts, Water Plant Superintendent. About a year and a half ago, when we received the original opinion of probable cost, we weren't exactly sure where this chemical was going to be placed on site. Once we made that determination. The one thing lacking in the construction cost was that they did not take into account building code. This chemical is very combustible in the raw form. So where we decided to place it, we will need a full fire suppression system, full air handling system, and we will have to separate the upstairs from the downstairs. So that's where the majority of the additional construction cost is. The other amount of forty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty is for engineering. That was originally set aside. We were going to do SRF funding for the engineering. We have decided not to do that. So we were also taking the engineering costs from the balance in structural preservation project and moving it over to this project.
How much you still have in the structural preserve?
Well, the majority of that is being moved over to the zenith chemical improvements. We did not have anything identified for that hundred ninety thousand. That was what was left over when we took this.
All the leftovers, one ninety.
One ninety eight point fourteen.
Thank the state again for another two hundred thousand dollars in a chemical that probably really isn't necessary for me to drink the water in Sioux City, Iowa.
The one thing that this chemical really is doing for us is it's allowing us to maximize the usage of Riverside Collector Well.
It's again, I could still drink the water in Sioux City, Iowa, and I would not get sick. I would not have any adverse effects. I would not, it's the only requirement of the state because there's somebody else didn't have something else to do but to spend money for all the rest of us. It's a joke. It's an absolute joke. Every time, these are jokes. Because the state passes these ordinances that have no bearing on the quality of our water whatsoever. We drank this water out of that well. We put that well in when I was here thirty years ago. And we drank that water all that time, and I never got sick from it. Well. Don't forget, it's an ongoing cost too, young man. It isn't just this two hundred thousand. How much does it cost you a year for the chemical?
That does add into.
Yeah, it absolutely does. That's what irritates me.
Yeah.
And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna live one day longer because you're doing that. Something else will get me long before the water in Sioux City gets me. But we sit around here and don't ever fight that stuff. We never write letters in opposition. We say, yeah, gosh, go ahead, spend another four or five hundred thousand dollars. What the heck? Why? I know Rick didn't want to fight anybody, but I had higher expectations for you than that.
There are public comment periods when these.
Yeah, did you comment on that?
Well, this one, no.
No. Did Rick?
Can't speak for Rick.
Yeah. Exactly. So here we are.
But you do get notices of the comment period.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but we never comment, and we should.
Well, no, I understand your point, but I want to make sure.
Unfunded mandates. You know, I love the, this, our state, I'm gonna get on a soapbox here because I'm on a roll today. State legislature is going for the thirty-fourth amendment, I think it is, to the Constitution. They're gonna be one of the fifty states that try to get, because the federal government tells them way too many things they have to do. Well, when do we get one at the State House? When do we get one that says they can't tell us what to do anymore? Unless it's in the public good. This is not in the public good.
So the next time there's a comment period on that, I think it's your, incumbent upon you to ask the council where they stand on that. Not just assume that we're gonna accept it. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Moving on.
Just irritates me, the state's taking that position, but yet they ram this stuff down our throats. Point well taken.
Yeah, for sure.
Page eighty-eight. Project seven-one-nine-zero-one-four Railroad Crossing Improvements Downtown. During our review of the department's budget for the CIP sheet, we reduced the funding from one point two million to four hundred and eighty thousand. And there were, was no sheets handed out at that hearing.
Go on, our side neighborhood services manager.
Waiting for you too, as long as I'm on a roll today.
I had a feeling. Just to address downtown briefly, we did receive some additional grants. We also have better cost estimates now that we've been working with our consultant, have met with the FRA, the Iowa DOT, and the railroad on site. So we do have a better cost estimate. So that's why that cost went down. And then with Leeds and Riverside, we've made some major progress with regard to receiving grants. And so at this point, the only crossing, oh, I guess I skipped ahead. Should I wait until?
You can probably combine them somewhat.
Okay.
I don't understand why we can't talk to them.
Okay. And then Leeds and Riverside, we've again got some additional grants. All of those crossings will have gate arms shortly or already do, except for one on Fun Place, which we have applied for a grant for. So we'll find out in October if we got that. So our estimates have gone down quite a bit in Leeds and Riverside because we've been able to get grants. We've done all the walkthroughs of Leeds with UP and BNSF now. And so once we get the gate.
Jill, one question I had. So if the twenty-twenty funding for the downtown was one point two and we're reducing it to four hundred and eighty, and then we look on the outer years, the what, twenty-twenty-two and the twenty-twenty-three of the reductions for Leeds and Riverside? I mean, if we were allocating one point two or anticipating that, why don't we bump up the Leeds and Riverside? I mean, if you combine those areas, is that possible?
That would be up to you.
Because it looks like, I mean, if you're, if we were allocating one point two in fiscal year twenty-twenty, and now it's four eighty, and then you add the three fifty-five and the four oh five, I mean, you're, you're just over the one point two, right, that you're originally allocating?
Yep.
So why don't we bump all three of those projects and run with them in twenty-twenty? And that way, to the mayor's point, you're being a little more equitable and just talking about different areas. And you're saying, look, we're doing all of these improvements in twenty-twenty. We, we think it's important to do in multiple areas across town.
Is that possible, Donna?
Yes.
That would be, that would be my urge.
Okay.
The grants don't have an impact on that?
Nope, not at all. We'll just move forward. We just did walkthroughs with BNSF on, and we got grants for West Nineteenth and Military Road. And so those will be installed the next, I think they have six months after we do an agreement. And then Fun Place, those should be installed, if not already. And then I just did the walkthrough with UP on Forty-first Street December. So those will be coming.
They're still blowing their horns.
Right, yeah, we're just doing the walkthroughs to do the design to get the gate arms in. So in the next month or so, I should have an agreement before council for Forty-first Street for the grant, and then we'll keep moving forward.
And then we're not waiting on any additional grants. We anticipate that this is kind of as low as we're looking at these numbers.
Fun Place might come up. I won't find out until October. The weird part is that Fun Place on the UP line qualified, but BNSF's didn't for some reason, even though they're right there. So I'm hoping that one comes up in October, but we'll have to see.
And I suppose if we fund it in twenty-twenty, we still have time to try to collect on those.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And further reduction.
Yep.
So unless we get Fun Place, so they're still gonna blow the horns going through Forty-first.
Right, so Fun Place is the key. That's the one that we need to do. If we don't get a grant for that, we can still move forward and do an agreement, but we would be a hundred percent, we'd have to pay for a hundred percent of that. So that's why that cost estimate for Fun Place is a little higher in the revised sheet. So I have it budgeted right now as if we're not getting a grant for that one.
It seems like they blow their horn when they come by Twenty-eighth Street. Why?
By Twenty-eighth Street? A lot, is that what you're saying?
And Floyd.
Yes. That's because in addition to the federal rule that governs crossings, when they're doing any type of movement in a yard, they have a lot more requirements as far as when they use their horn. That's a totally separate thing. So anytime they're backing up, they're blowing that horn, is how I've been explained by the FRA.
So we've got eighty units of housing going up there that are gonna live with that horn day and night?
Yeah, we met with, when the FRA was in town for downtown, we took him over to that crossing. In addition, we had Canadian National there as well, and, and the DOT and the FRA explained that even if we were to quiet twenty-fourth or Twenty-eighth, that movement in that, in that yard would continue with that horn noise, so. And we cannot govern that. That's a federal thing that has no relief at this point.
Do we need a motion then to move seven-nineteen dash oh-two-six up to twenty-twenty?
No, because we will prove the technical changes. We'll just make this as a technical change, and that'll encompass, that motion will encompass.
All right. Okay?
Good job.
Thanks, Jill.
Thanks, Jill.
Thanks, Brad. I'm not done. I hate to tell you, until you get Fun Place, it doesn't, you're wasting your money here. I'm just telling you that.
We'll go find out in October, right?
Right.
If we get Fun Place.
But it's not, you still have a match that's not in here. I'm just telling you that.
Yes, right now I have it budgeted as if we are not gonna get a grant for Fun Place. If that was the case, we'd move forward. I'd have an agreement before you to review that we would then have to pay a hundred percent of the gate arms, which is how it's budgeted now.
I don't.
If in October we get a grant, then that's, we're paying only five percent, is how the grant works.
So really, we're, we're just waiting to find out if we get the grant in October. So if we get it, we're gonna save a whole lot of money. If we don't get it, we're still covered.
Yep.
Right.
But we're not alleviating the problem, is that what you're saying there?
That'll be the next CIP. And what I'm saying is, don't do any of this stuff. If you don't get a quiet zone, don't do the stuff. That's all I'm saying. You either do it or you don't do it.
But if there's not the, yeah, if we don't get that Fun Place, then.
Yeah, we would wait, we wouldn't do any immediate installation or anything until we had a clear agreement or plan with Fun Place, a hundred percent.
Okay.
Long range plan, and so this is moving it into twenty-two and twenty-three. And then the large chunk of it in unprogrammed.
I don't have enough years left, but nineteen sixty-two, if you go back to Connie Bodine's original plan of the Floyd Valley River, Hooven Drive was the most, people have forgotten, it's been so long ago, that Charlie Hooven was the congressman at the time that got the funding for the Floyd River. Does anybody even here know that, other than me?
No.
I feel like I have a history lesson every time I.
Charlie Hooven was the congressman that got the funding. Connie Bodine laid that valley out, and there was supposed to be a north-south four-lane road running from downtown to Leeds. And here we are. I gotta get my years right. Thirty, fifty-five years later, still wondering how we're gonna connect that. But anyway.
So we're adding the sheet back in for.
It won't matter, because it's not going anywhere. Because we don't understand the importance of moving people around railroad tracks. We just don't understand that. Instead, we're gonna spend nineteen million dollars on a viaduct that's gonna solve one tenth of the problem, that this would solve ninety percent of.
Wonder how much it was fifty-five years ago?
A lot cheaper than what you got now.
And we will continue to wait, and we'll continue to wait until it costs so much that we can't afford to do it, which we've already done.
Well, I think we're near that at seventy-seven, seventy-seven million.
We're beautiful around here. Did anybody ever look at the dykes and say, why'd they make them so wide? Why'd they make them so wide, Dave?
Probably to put a road on them.
Huh?
Probably to put a road on them.
You think they did?
Possibly.
Oh, I think they did too.
I was alive back then.
You guys should, Connie, the one thing Connie Bodine made me do the day I got elected was read his nineteen sixty-two comprehensive plan that he didn't spend two hundred and ninety thousand dollars to get done. He wrote it himself, by the way. And I think you can still find that in the archives, and it would be, it would be a good history lesson for all of you to read that and see what he proposed, and see how much he knew at that particular time. It was unbelievable.
Visionary.
So. Anyway, it's good you have it back in, but it's a, you just wasted a lot of sheets of paper for no reason, but what the heck, we all feel better again today, and that's the main thing, as long as we feel good about each other, that's the.
And maybe the infrastructure bill will do this much.
Yeah, yeah. Make a motion.
To what?
The president has a plan.
Direct staff to incorporate all the technical changes into the FY twenty-nineteen CIP budget, items ten through fifteen.
I haven't had my shot at this.
Oh, we have more?
Yeah, I do.
Excuse me, I apologize.
He told you he was on a roll.
Well, he's feeling better.
Yeah, all of a sudden.
Page fifty-nine, are you telling me that hundred and seventeen thousand dollars? When you tell me there's a year in balance, I assume there's a year in balance. Don't put a year in balance there if there isn't. So is there or not?
There'll be a forty thousand dollar balance unless he has emergency repairs. This is your city buildings.
When you tell me there's year in balances, I assume there's year in balances, and I wanna know why you're not using them rather than bonding.
Currently, you have cash of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-six. We have encumbrances of four hundred and fifty-six thousand seven sixty, which gives us available cash of four thou, forty thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. And we've done the HVAC, or it's encumbered, and the carpet is encumbered.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that year in balance is correct in there.
Well, the hundred and seventeen isn't.
Right.
But right now I'm looking at forty, unless you have other items that are not encumbered.
Well, there's forty thousand left, and that would be for unanticipated repairs.
Unanticipated is thirty, so it's, it's effectively zero.
That's fine, but when you show a hundred and seventeen, I ask the question, why do we need a hundred and seventeen?
I agree. That, that's not correct.
You've got seventy-three in roofs on the next page.
And the roofs right now.
But yet you're bonding for the, or sales tax transferring in for the. I know the rest of, you know, they, they don't wanna ask you these hard questions, but.
You're, you're over my pay grade, Bob.
We've got a hundred and ninety-three thousand, but we.
Well, the problem with this sometimes, when you can't, when they show the year in balances, you don't know what's, work has been completed and what work hasn't been completed, and there's six more months. This is their expected balance. That's what they're telling me. So why would we transfer in any more than we need to?
When there's a balance.
When there's a balance.
Um, right now, the roof project has an unencumbered balance of a hundred and ninety-three thousand nine oh nine, and we do have the Art Center roof to do.
Which is on another page.
Which is, the Art Center roof, no, it's the hundred and twenty.
Is next year.
Eighteen.
Well, you've got it under, okay, you're right.
Yeah, it's on eighteen.
You're right.
It's in eighteen.
So you're telling me I already spent it and a hundred and twenty thousand?
No, the hundred and twenties has not been done yet. So out of the hundred and ninety-three, you're gonna have seventy-three thousand for whatever he's got planned in his roof program for this year.
And what do you have in the roof program for this year, Stanley? Because you're not showing a page for it, that's why I'm asking.
Seems to be we're doing the, um, the Caldwell panels replacement project.
What's that?
That's the one twenty, Dan, right? I don't have that sheet with me.
Well, okay, I'm just, I'm gonna know, unwrap up.
We can get a detailed work plan.
I'm sure when you get, have time to get the detailed plan, there won't be anything left.
I also know how to operate. Give them a day, and she's all gone.
It'll be negative when I give you a full day to look at it, Stan.
All detailed.
Moving on to the Art Center, page seventy-five. It's not that I really don't have any issue with the Art Center. It's not that there's a trust issue there at all. But what happens if these projects come in under budget? I don't want it to go in their big black hole.
No, they do not get that.
Well, they'll find a way to spend it. How do I, how am I assured that we're only paying for this? How am I assured of that?
Because Mr. Mock is the project manager of the Art Center project.
So I come after him if there's a problem, right?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I wanna make sure I'm understanding what the mayor's saying. So, I mean, that's a contract that we, that we accept, that we vote on?
They're actually start, they started discussion this week with Rick on doing the inside of their existing building, and these items are in the existing building, and they're, they're running the whole construction through us, so you actually will see the contracts and things.
We see the contract, but in your write-ups, don't you tell us what the, what the balance is and what?
Yeah, that's what I wanna know, every one of them.
And then that's what we've got to remember to.
Right, because otherwise, it has a tendency to get spent somewhere else.
Yeah, it's good business.
Thank you very much. City share of new development, there's page eighty-one, there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Is that already spent?
It's.
Somebody you don't know, nobody's here, I know. Will you get us a report on that?
We'll get a report.
That might be on my pages, believe it or not.
I, I do think, and I'm going from a, not a really good memory here, Donna, but I, I thought one year you did prepare a, kind of a summary of the balances and.
Yes.
Where, didn't you do that for us?
Yes.
That might not be a bad idea.
We can get you that one for the final wrap-up.
Oh, I do have one on page one fifty-nine, because this is a, a personal deal, which I know is what's gonna happen, the nine hundred thousand dollars that you have for LED scoreboard and ribbon board. That's a real concern for me, because you have now created a new opportunity for revenue for Spectra, but yet we're paying a hundred percent of it.
No, it's actually split between two sources.
No, there, that four fifty is probably, isn't that they're all in for kitchen and everything?
That is a.
Well, the private is, they're gonna go out and sell this. That's what my real concern is, Bob.
Mayor, on page one fifty-four is their contribution for the kitchen, and that's in three-seven-nine-zero-one-zero.
Right. So.
And the LEDs is in three-seven-nine-oh-twenty-five.
Okay, that's in nineteen, the nine hundred thousand. Okay. But you're showing four fifty in private as well, which is sales of ads.
Correct.
Okay. I'm gonna be very selfish here. In every other arena, that revenue is shared if those lights and ribbon boards are on during a game. So when are we going to sit down and talk to the two teams about how this program is gonna work? Because I know what's gonna happen if we don't.
We will as we get further down the path towards replacing that board. I mean, it's a nineteen.
Because I'm not turning them on in my games. I rent that facility, and I'm telling you, I'm not gonna allow you to turn them on in my games, which I have a right to do in other arenas, you have that right, without negotiating that. Because that's, you're not gonna, you're not gonna go steal advertisers from me, run them during my game, and, and a lot, and expect me to accept that. Or the hockey team, they're not going to either. I've already talked to them, they're.
I mean, the other option is to fully fund it, but then we have to add nine hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars more to.
Listen, I'm all for it, but I know how it works, Bob. It, it, I played football in Billings one time, and they sold, they didn't have any control over the boards there. There would be a big play, and they'd be running a rerun, and all of a sudden it would go blank, because during that timeframe, it's programmed in that the hospital commercial had to come on. Well, you can't do that.
For an event that has live action.
Yeah, there's got to be some coordination here, is all I'm trying to say, and I don't, I don't have a lot of comfort yet that we know what we're doing with that. That's all I'm saying, and I'm speaking very selfishly. I, I wanna be very upfront about that, but, but you can't disrupt, you cannot disrupt games.
Bring something to the table to help resolve that.
I hope you're right, Robert.
That would be my hope too, and I mean, I think we're talking, I don't know if it would go under E-FAB necessarily, but I think that's where hopefully we can have people at the table representing the clients or people that are in the Tyson as well at the table.
E-FAB is not a negotiation.
No, it'd be the owners of the teams.
Yeah, I mean, that's not what our job would be.
Okay, then the last one is three-seventy-one. You're showing a two hundred and two thousand dollar balance.
Let me look at it.
We're getting close to the end of this fiscal year. I realize we have five months to go.
And that one we did look at.
Okay?
Three-seventy-one.
Three-seventy.
Waters, five nineteen.
How much, Bob, did you say?
Two hundred and two.
Six hundred and four thousand. Right now, the cash is six hundred and four one fifty-six, and let me look at what's encumbered.
I'll get you out of here. We're about done.
Right now, right now, the unencumbered balance is five hundred and sixty-nine thousand two eighty-three. So they do, it does look like they're. Five sixty-nine two eighty-three, so it does look like if the year continues as they have been, they're not spending this. So we would probably, at project review, either transfer the money out or not fund the FY nineteen.
Okay, that's all, and I don't care. We've got plenty of needs. I just wanna make sure we're not just sitting on money in an area where we have lots of needs and we don't.
I'm, I'm still doing project review, and if the money has not been spent, I do take it back. We get, we get the projects three years to spend it when it's a non-annual. On an annual, we look and see what they need, and we don't fund the next year if they've got too much cash.
Okay.
Yes, see, that's the other thing, always thought CIP money carried over.
It does carry over for three years, but if they don't use it within three years, we reprogram it, and on the annuals, we, we keep managing those on an annual basis.
Okay.
And we do have an emergency project at West, that may use up some of this.
No, my, my part was not to take it away from you, because you got all kinds of needs out there.
That's.
Right, and that's, that's example, we, we kinda.
Okay, and then the last one, one seventy-three, are, is, we have all this ambulance money because we haven't bought them?
We have not bought them. We put that on hold when notice came that things were not going the right direction, so we, we put that on hold, and we are four of the ambulances.
Two for this year and?
Two for last year and two for this year.
Okay. And then one for the? Well, this is, okay, eighteen, nineteen, yes, okay. So you're gonna bid all four of them at one time?
Yes.
Because it takes that long to get them, okay.
All right, now, Mr. Moore. I'll move that we direct staff to incorporate all the technical changes into the FY twenty-nineteen CIP budget, which would include items ten through fifteen inclusive.
Second. I'm voting first.
Well, yeah. You're our leader.
Well, this is not the final deal, so I'll vote yes.
Waters.
Hi.
Gretkin.
Gretkin.
Hi.
Hi. I'll move we direct staff to balance the CIP budget.
Um, I act.
The kind of motion you want?
I would actually like you to pull that one back, because since we do have items now coming back on the twenty-first.
We could do that on the twenty-first.
We'll have to do it on the twenty-first.
And we'll still make our deadline by March.
Yes.
But to March fifteenth is the absolute deadline.
Right, but March fifteenth is when we will be going to council.
I hope you can find a lot of reductions in that timeframe that you want.
Tell me where you'd like me to look, and I'll find them.
These big spend on liberals I sit with on the council.
Hey, one thing I do want to bring up, Mayor, if I may, unless you want me to wait till Monday.
No.
It's on the discussion we're reading in the Sioux City Journal about the automated traffic enforcement cameras, and I just want to point out that, you know, that's moving along in the state legislature, but it's, but it's divided. I mean, the Senate, if the, if the report I read was correct, the Senate Judiciary Committee voted seven to six to approve the Senate Study Bill three-zero-two-five, which bans the cameras, which would be effective seven-one of eighteen, and I think all of us, and I guess I should just speak for myself, but I, I know Councilmember Gretkin feels the same, that our camera money was spent on and actually spent on public safety programs and improvements, and I just point that out because if the cameras are banned, we no longer have them, we're going to have two main issues. One will be the safety of our, of Sioux Cityans, and, and then secondly, how we fund the public safety programs that we have been, and I just want us to be prepared for that happening, if it, if it does happen. But there have been arguments on both sides, and, and if you read the paper and read the reports, I think the arguments on both sides are pretty good, but that will be coming, there'll be more on that, and I just want us to be proactive on it and how we deal with it. And I think we proved, I think the council has proved to the citizens that it's, that it is for, for safety reasons, because we did, and I think it was at the suggestion of the mayor, that we did take down one of our cameras, that we no longer thought was effective at the intersection where, where it had been placed. So I think we're very open to the, to the cameras. I think we listened to the input, but this is going to overrule anything that we do as a.
Well, there is a bill that would make you put it into infrastructure. That's still alive.
The funds.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so it's not like it's completely dead. I would say, though, that I would like a report. I know that our police have been working the interstate, doing a good job as well, from what I can observe, because they seem to have somebody pulled over every time I drive by that they are working that, which tells you that the speed has not diminished. In fact, it's probably increased now that we've opened that bottom area up. So I would like a report on what they have been doing out there.
Okay.
And the reason I would like a report is I, I, not because I'm going to go write, start writing everybody tickets, but I am concerned about the speed, not only there, but in other areas of our town, and, you know, one of these days, we are lax on that, and I don't mean it because the police are doing a bad job. I mean it because we need a traffic department, the enforcement department that, that we had, but we've seemed to have shifted some of our priorities, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure it's in the best interests of our citizens to do that. I, I still see a lot of people texting, probably am guilty if you call, I think I can voice text legally, but still, you see a lot of people texting and that as they drive. So I, I would hope we figure out a way to maybe fund something to increase that enforcement.
And I, I, I don't know, Mayor, if the traffic enforcement has the ten miles, ten miles per hour over the posted.
They don't, and you know what?
Limit.
Good.
Yeah, like our cameras do, but I, I'm thinking you've got to be going at least ten over. I mean, if you're ten or under, you're.
Eleven.
Cameras?
Yeah, so it's sixty, so sixty-five posted.
No, I think it's eleven.
Limit. You, you could be going seventy-five, the cameras don't take, don't go off, but if you're going seventy-six or eighty.
That's why I want a live police officer. Everybody says they don't get.
Due.
Due process. Well, I want to have them have due process. And they're going to find out due process has a lot of downside, because if you come through our town even seventy miles an hour in that area, I think you, I think you should get a ticket. I'm sorry, but five miles over, seventy miles an hour going through a, a major city is too fast, and so I have no problem with our police officer writing a ticket. I don't want them to be nice people out there. I want them, I want people to slow down. I get tired of going down that Interstate sixty-five and people blow by me.
Well, it's a proven fact, without any doubt, that speed kills. Speed causes accidents. Accidents cause property damage, causes injuries, causes fatalities. I saw a clip, and I don't know how old it is, but, well, it has to be recent to the point with our new chief, Chief Mueller, on the Journal's website, that, that Bruce Miller asked the chief about traffic, uh, cameras specifically, and, and the chief, uh, chief's, in part, his answer was that, uh, there is proof that, uh, accidents are reduced and speed is going down, and with the use of the traffic cameras, and that's really, I, I get a little frustrated when I hear the complaints, read the complaints, that it was all a, a revenue-grabbing.
Cash grab, yeah.
Cash cow kind of mentality. I was there when the red lights, still working with the police department, when the red lights, uh, traffic cameras came on, and at, I can tell you, without any reservations whatsoever, at no time, did the command staff ever discuss the issue of money, and that we could make money off of this, or we're going to use the revenue for, that was not, it was all based around traffic safety and providing a safe environment for people to travel within our community, and, and I couldn't agree more. I don't want to see people, uh, believe it or not, uh, I think police officers universally would just as soon never write a citation, uh, for the rest of their careers. Their goal is to seek compliance, and if they can get people to comply, and often, police have this marvelous capacity to influence the behavior of people through citations, through arrests, whichever may, the case may be, but if we can emphasize the point of, of the, um, need to keep traffic flowing at a reasonable rate, to reduce the speed factor, to save on accidents, to save on injuries, to save on fatalities, it just makes our community far more safer, and that's really what it's all about, and as long as we have documentation that there are fewer accidents at, at the intersections and that speed is going down, I have to believe it's a good thing, and, uh, and the use of the cameras would then allow, uh, to have the small traffic unit they have. I would agree with the mayor that, when I first came on, not to mention history, but we had in uniform officers, uniform police officers, there was a uniform division that handled the criminal part, and there was a traffic division that handled the traffic part, and it was probably at least twice, if not a little bit bigger than what the current traffic unit is, which may be a sergeant and three. Now, they can, if you call in and you have, if you have a problem with speeding on a certain street, they'll take that information, they'll go out and they'll set up and they'll do their speed study and, and hopefully have an impact. But, but they don't have the ability, again, in the old days, we had guys running, stopped a city council member, who didn't, who, who I said, hey, do me a favor, slow down, because if you slow down, then I don't have to work, and it's, it's not the kind of work that I want to do with the accidents and all that stuff, and he said, oh, no, I was wrong, write me the ticket, and I wrote him the ticket. It was Jerry O'Sullivan. He was, he was a professor up at Barcliff University and, and on the city council, and, and he knew it was the right thing to do, and, and I guess that's my position, so I, I, any assistance we'd want to give the police department to him, enhance their traffic department would be wonderful, and I think it would have a big impact, but more to your point, Dan, uh, we do need to monitor that, the, what's going on with the legislature, and there is a, a really big bonus to, to doing this and, and keeping the safes, uh, the streets as safe as possible, and, and it's frustrating for people to get citations. I don't blame them. I've had a couple over the years, but it's not intentional, but it can cause, you know, terrible consequences, so.
We have the number of the highest insurance rates in the state.
Yes.
We don't drive safely here.
Nope, that's exactly right.
So.
Enforcement's a, a key to, to changing that all.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Move adjourn.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.